5:09, everybody. allegiance to the law, in America and to the republic forward to span. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a couple of quick agenda notations. We're going to be tabling the minutes for December 21st. We're going to be tabling under action items, D, the letters of hire. I think that's just the changes for. Do we have any further agenda review?
No.
Okay. Alrighty, for action items, we signed the payroll manifest and I. So I will need a motion for the chair to sign the ambulance title. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I need a motion for the chair to sign the Sanders confidentiality agreement for searches.
I'll make a motion for you to sign the confidentiality.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we've tabled letters of hire. New business, disposing municipal vehicles.
Yes, I had a request again from the fire chief to find out how the board wanted to proceed with disposing of this now third ambulance. We have the new ambulance. So there's one to be disposed of. I have reached out to a couple different people and agencies trying to get a value. So.
Which ones for this one?
Third ones for this one. Pick up a sentence.
The 20, I think it was the 2011 Ford.
So the old command vehicle.
The old, the eldest ambulance.
Ambulance.
Ambulance, okay, alright.
What have we done in the past?
Well, it depends. We've sometimes advertised on GovDeals, which is sort of a nationwide site. Sometimes we've just advertised in the paper. I know that it was mentioned by the fire chief that there is another fire department, by a rescue department here in the state that had some interest. So I don't know if you want to just maybe wait until I get a little bit more information.
Yeah, I think maybe we get them in here and find out what they know or what they think or.
Nobody has any idea of that. Isn't it an 08? Is that what you said?
2011.
2011, I think.
Yeah. Do we have a policy on municipal vehicles?
No, not on disposing.
Alright, so is the board fine with having Karen do a little more investigating into this?
Yeah.
Everybody?
Yep.
Okay.
Alrighty.
Throw it back on them, Karen. Karen, a little back, you know what I mean?
Well, he did say he was gonna look into it, right?
Yeah.
The chief?
Yes, and so as I said, there's another town, but he didn't have a figure for me, so.
Well, you should have some kind of idea of what it might be worth, even if it's a roundabout, you know?
Okay.
And if somebody's interested, they want to make an offer, at least he can take a good judgment.
Right.
Maybe give my heads up, so.
I really think it's their responsibility to go out there and check the stuff out instead of having you do it, you know?
Right.
Give them a heads up and then they can come in and see us.
Okay.
Alrighty, so we have the new BCEP portions, which Barnstead's portion is 257,792 and 35 cents, which we are actually the largest of all four. Epsom comes in second, and that's done by population, I believe. Ed, yes? BCEP is done by population? Yeah, okay.
We have the most saying it now.
Alright, and in the packed envelope, you saw the 2022 holiday schedule. And also, we had the room and meals. Barnstead's portion, as of right now, in hand is 349,314.41. We have been notified that the state has decided to release 31 million total for all the communities. We don't quite know what Barnstead's portion is as of yet, but there'll be more under 2021 rooms and meals coming to Barnstead. It wasn't a question, it was a statement. Rooms and meals tax.
We received a check from the state.
Yeah, that's in hand.
Well, you already have. It was part of your tax rate that you set.
So, but also the second part of that, Ed, is that the state is releasing $31 million more. So there's going to be additional monies for 2021 rooms and meal coming back to Barnstead. We just don't know the exact figure.
Oh, good news.
In addition to the 349,000.
Yep, and if the board would approve the 2022 holiday schedule? All the holidays that are listed on there are based on the federal holidays.
It hasn't changed it at all, right? There was no changes on it, I don't believe.
No.
So do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the holiday schedule.
Do we have a second? Okay, we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I don't want to quit my pens, what goes on there? Okay, informational items. Do you have anything for the Karen that you wanted to talk about before we go into the budget?
I do. The police chief is extending his vacation. He had quite a few hours built up, and so he's just extending it for one week longer. So instead of coming back on the 3rd, I believe it's the 10th that he'll be back. And Captain Cormier is in charge while he's gone. And then on the police cruiser that the police chief presented when he was in. And then Captain Cormier last week talked about it. They thought a trade-in value would be about 6,000. However, they've reached out to a couple different companies. Now, that trade-in value is now 11,500. And then they also asked for a quote if they were to trade in the Tahoe, which is currently only used as the animal control vehicle, if they have to pick up animals. It's an older model. It's in need of repairs. However, they could get $9,000 for it if they traded that in. So that would bring the cost of a new vehicle if you choose to vote on it. You can do it later as a warrant article, or you can talk about it tonight. But it would bring the total cost down to about $14,000 for a new cruiser. They'd be able to use the lights and everything from the old cruiser in this, so. Well, I asked the chief that. He said that they would use one of the police, one of the police vehicles for that purpose.
The Tahoe?
Yeah, the Tahoe. I don't have that information here. I can look at, I can pull the vehicle file on it.
2015 or 16 or something like that, yeah.
But, and it has between 80, 90,000 miles. And of course, they say you want to trade it in before it hits 100,000 miles. That's sort of the cutoff. It does need some repairs if you're going to inspect it. So it was just something that they.
I think it came with the former dog officer, didn't it? The vehicle?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
So was the 11.5 just the Ford Explorer, or was that the Ford and the Charger?
Nope, that's.
So we're not even talking.
Right.
Now, is that before or after the catalytic converter repairs?
That, he, they disclosed everything that was needed, two catalytic converters. I don't know if it was tires, some other repairs. It came to about 1,500. And the company said that's without any repairs. That's what they will pay and they will fix it. So.
Yeah, because I think the repairs at that point in time was what, 4,000, including the catalytic converters?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we're getting there. We are.
Okay, so what is your recommendation?
Well, again, if we could use some of the money from this budget, I think it would be great for the town. But as I explained last week, you don't have a specific line item for purchasing vehicles in that department. So I'm not sure. I can certainly check with Department of Revenue. Because, you know, if that's the case, you could, and it's allowable, you could just vote to get it out of this year's budget. And the budget would allow, would certainly allow that. What we have that might be.
I would like a little. One of the year.
Yep. If I may, I just want to point out to our budget committee person that's here. The reason that the budget would allow for that is because the police department has not had the full seven full-time officers. So that's why there's some extra money in the budget.
Do you know what the extra is?
Um. Oh, absolutely, yeah. He, his budget alone had around, will have around $40,000 left in it. As I mentioned earlier, I did speak with the department heads and have asked them to go ahead and purchase those items that were discussed last week. Maybe, and even some other items that the 2021 budget will allow. And that enabled us to reduce their requests for 2022.
Right.
So.
If we decided we wanted to, Karen, if revenue possibly 7.40 might be a line, that revenue might be willing to crime machinery and equipment, I mean cruisers' equipment, it's possible that that would work.
Good.
Okay, right. Alright, so we can figure that out. To see if it can even be done in the first place. Okay, so we do have some encumbrances that we need to vote on now, which we'll just take care of right now. So I need a motion to transfer 20,000 from the police department line, 4194-1-430, and transfer it to general government buildings, repairs and maintenance.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? So this is taking 20,000 from the police department.
Health, the health line.
The which line?
Health.
Health insurance.
Yeah, health insurance, and then going into general government buildings, repairs and maintenance. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, then I'll need a motion to encumber $20,000 for the library repairs.
I'll make a motion to encumber the 20,000 for the library repairs.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I'll need a motion to treat warrant article number seven, which is Parks and Rec, in the amount of 7,500 for the heavy-duty modular ice rink walls, and warrant article number eight, in the amount of 25,000 for the playground build-out as non-lapsing for a maximum of one additional year. So these are the warrant articles from 2021.
Correct.
So. So moved. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll make them.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? So this is taking the existing articles and just extending them for another year.
Yes, I called Department of Revenue and explained to them that the Parks and Rec Commission wasn't able to perform this work, and I asked, you know, how we could encumber that money. And so that language came directly from Department of Revenue, so we know that it will be approved.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Ed, you thinking? Okay, so it's 401 abstention. Alright. So are we ready to start on the budget? Actually, do we have public announcements?
Make one just about the ice arena. I know I put something out on social media. People have to be a little patient with the ice down there. They're working real hard to get it going. And people did get out on it, even though it was supposed not to, so they kind of three steps back, and they're working at it again, and they're working really hard down there and doing it for you. So just talk to your friends, neighbors, kids, whoever. Hang in there until there's, they'll make all kinds of announcements when it's ready. It's going to be warm the next week, so they're battling the weather. We'll get there. Everybody's help with it.
And cold.
In cold weather. It'll help.
Alright. Any other public announcements? And then I believe budget committee meetings start the 3rd, correct? Monday at the 3rd, which will be the school district, and Thursday, the 6th, which will be the town. It will be on Zoom, correct? So anybody watching that want to watch the budget committee meetings?
We'll be there.
Yes, and all that information is on the town website. If you just click on Budget Committee, it pulls up the entire schedule, gives you the link to Zoom.
Yeah. Alright, great. Alright, is everybody ready to go into the budget? Seeing as we've already gone through this, Karen made the changes that we had requested last week. So what we'll do is each, each object, if you will, we'll do what the budget total is for that object. So, count 4130, which is Executive Office. I'll take a motion to approve the selectmen's number of 316,324. Yep, some pages, the total's on page two halfway down. Do we have a second? Correct. Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, unanimous. 4140, which is election and registration. Number is half, three quarters of the way down, page three. A motion to approve 4140 for $162,034. Do we have a motion in a second? If anyone wants to just so move it, that's fine. Okay.
Well, are you talking the first line, under 4140, or just the first? It's basically, as you can see, it was just the department head's suggested salary. And then under the selectmen's column, it's what the board has already approved. So that's the difference.
Alright. When anyone's ready, we'll take a motion. Yep.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. 4150, which is Financial Administration. It's department and the selectmen's number is the same. They'll take a motion for 110,791 for Financial Administration.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 4153, which is Judicial and Legal Expenses. Both department and selectman number is the same, 50,000. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. 4155, Personnel Administration. Both department and select board is the same. Take a motion for $6,458.
So moved.
No second?
Check.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
4191, which is Planning and Zoning. Both department and select board number is the same. I'll take a motion for 27,166.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 4194, which is General Government Building. Both department and select board number is the same. The motion would be to approve $66,116 for General Government Buildings. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Karen, that's an estimated on heat, right?
On heat for us?
Yeah. We're just going to hope it doesn't go up past that.
Right, that's a guessing game. We could not have any company, you know, give us a straight figure for.
They're not walking right now.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. 4195 for Summatories. Department and select board is the same. The motion would be for $3,000 for Summatories.
So moved.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. 4196, Insurance Not Allocated. Both department and select board is the same, 79,583 for Insurance Not Allocated. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We don't need to do a motion on the whole gen, total for junk.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, 4210, Police Department. Both the department and the select board have the same number. I'll take a motion for $945,145 for the Police Department. Do we have a motion? And these are with all the changes that we talked about last week.
From last week, right?
Correct.
Yep.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ed? Correct.
Reason I'm hesitant on that is because the crime gas, except the same figure we had a year ago. You haven't, you don't know how many miles it's based on. We don't know how many miles a police vehicle travels. Gas prices going up, I don't know if anybody watched any of the news stations this afternoon, but crude oil is going up. Except for 76, they're talking now $100 a barrel. So is 25,000 worth being up?
Well, and if you go over, we have a capital reserve for, just for that purpose.
They used what, 13,000 last year?
Yes, but that's because they were down.
Gas was a whole lot less expensive last year.
Right.
And they, they didn't have the whole crew.
Yeah.
We have not had to use it, so we don't have a warrant article to add anything to it. If you want to look at it, I believe it still has, you know, at least 25,000 in it. Warrant articles. Correct.
Well, we got almost twice as much in there than they used last year.
Yeah.
In a reserve.
Okay, so Ed, you said aye, and Rick, did you say aye?
I did.
Okay, so it's unanimous. Okay. So what I'm going to do is I'll do the, if we do the motion and the second, then we'll wait a couple minutes for discussion, and if you have a chance to review it, so that way we won't go on it until everybody's comfortable.
Just want to quickly.
Yep.
Line item, you know?
Yep.
Instead of going through each one.
Okay, so 4220, Fire Department Rescue. There is a difference. The Fire Department is recommending 1,060 for 275. The Select Board is recommending 1,000, 1 million, I'm sorry, not 1,000, 1,56,300. So if we want to move it and then have a second, then we can, everybody can review it for.
So most of that is from Vehicle Maintenance.
Yeah, there's some in 2-610, Durable Equipment, and then the next one, 615, Disposable Equipment. But I have asked him to go through there and see if there's anything he can purchase this year to, you know. to, you know, to level fund it.
Yeah, like they could get uniforms this year, couldn't they?
He already sent me a quote on the uniforms, so that line on the next page. I've already, I believe, reduced.
So we got what, an $8,000 difference?
Yeah, because we have Select Board's recommending 34, he was recommending 40 plus, that's already reduced. Okay. For the uniforms.
Yeah, and the big increase that he's at, he's looking at is in the Truck Vehicle Maintenance. That's $5,000. Dollar difference. I don't know. I can tell the board that the grant has been resubmitted for a new Tower Truck. It will be a combination of Tower and Engine. So it will actually replace two vehicles. However, we won't know right now if, you know, if the grant's gonna be approved or not. So you know, that figure could change, certainly.
So the bulk of it is for the Truck Vehicle Maintenance?
Yeah.
Yeah, $5,000 difference, yeah.
Reference to the Tower Truck is a figure of hope. They determined they're gonna get a new Tower Truck. They're gonna add anything on it they possibly can. Even though they know that the roads are locked away, that they can't traverse these great big trucks. I said it before, I'll say it again. When it comes time to sign on the dotted line, unless this Tower Truck is patting low by pitchfield, I will not sign it. It's been a tastic time over there anyway. I think it's time that we started sharing some equipment.
Okay.
Now, they're saying that that, that truck will replace two on the grant?
Yes.
It would.
Like, we can get rid of one of our fire trucks?
Right, Engine Two and the Tower Truck. Because what they're proposing is, the model is called a Quint. I'm certainly not an expert on any of this, so.
Yeah, it's a combination. It's a tower, but it's also a pump.
But it's also a pump, right. And so then they would replace two vehicles of their fleet, so.
And I believe, don't quote me on this, but I believe that would be comparable to this, or smaller than a regular ladder truck, because it's a combination.
Exactly.
Any estimate, Karen, when they'll know if they get the grant or not?
No, I reached out to the Deputy Fire Chief, and he, he didn't have a date, so.
And then again, that would, that also, like they said, they'd be getting rid of two trucks.
Right.
And bringing in one. Space-wise, that would help also.
So do we have a motion for either the Department number or the Select Board number?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Select Board number of $1,056,300.
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion?
$1,056,300.
Which is a selectman's number. Do we have a second?
I already.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
4240, which is Building Inspection. The Department and the Select Board have the same number. I'll take a motion for $23,115 for Building Inspections.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
4290, which is Emergency Management. Both Department and Select Board number is the same. They'll take a motion for $3,250 for Emergency Management.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to Highway, Streets, Bridges, and Streets. 4311. Both this Department and the Select Board have the same number. So I'll take a motion for 4311 for $547,047.
So moved.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. 4312, Highways and Streets. Department and Select Board number is the same. They'll take a motion for $506,424 for Highways and Streets.
So moved.
No second?
I'll second that.
Give everybody a couple minutes to go through it. Any questions?
Karen, this is what the adjustment, right?
Yes. Yep. Okay.
I don't know if you can answer it, but we only spent $150 in erosion control last year on that one. Out of $5,000 that was requested, now we're requesting $3,000. That's 2-394.
And again, I think he was trying not to spend other items, looking at, you know, gravel. He knew he was going over and saw.
Does he have a project in mind or something like that that he's thinking of?
I think it's, it's typically every, you know, when they do roads, then they seed. They put down mat. So I can certainly find out if he has any particular project.
It's okay. I'm sure he's thinking of something, but that's not that much.
I don't know if he used silk socks or not. But you know, in the past, that's where a lot of his money was gone.
You know that, yeah.
I'm just trying to see what we actually used it on.
I think I missed that meeting when he came in, that's why. I think that's why I didn't ask it early.
Yeah, and I think he did, and he was here, he meant, I can't remember.
Otherwise, I would have.
I know we did talk about it.
And I will, I'll update that, so it says silt sock, not silk socks.
Silk socks and pantyhose.
Oh, boy.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
I did make a motion, we have a second, right?
Yeah.
That's so long ago. Okay. 4313, which is Bridges. Department and Select Board number is the same, so I'll take a motion for $29,000 for Bridges.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
4316, which is HSB Street Lighting. And it is for $6,300, so I'll take a motion on that.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, unanimous. Okay, 4319, which is Other Highway, Streets, and Bridges. We do have a $12,000 difference between what the Department has requested and the Select Board's number. Do you want to give a quick explanation on that, Karen, or?
Well, it just, $5,000 more under the Diesel. The Department Head would like. $5,000 more under Town Truck Maintenance, he would like. And then, I believe, it's $2,000 under the Equipment Maintenance. Now, my suggestion to him, and he's gonna review that, is under the Equipment Maintenance, anything that he could buy out of this budget now to, so, you know, so we wouldn't have to spend it next year, he could reduce that to the $10,000.
Did he pick up the new cotton blades and stuff for the ten rollers yet?
I'm not sure.
I think so. Cut and edges?
Yeah.
I think they were putting those on. Don't hold me to that, but I think so.
And as far as the Diesel goes, we have the account, right?
Yes, we, we do have, you know, for fuel and emergency. Needs. Quite a bit.
But that was before he got in the swap.
I was gonna say, we should be hopefully in a little better place if everything's fixed, right?
Right.
Part of it was, it's picked up too, which he has a newer one now, so that hopefully should reduce.
You did already see if you could get him to get some stuff from.
Yes, yeah. So he's gonna look at that and see, see if he can reduce that. And also the Town Truck Maintenance, he should be, you know, we had applied for the Diesel Grant to replace one of the trucks and got approval. We had to ask for an extension on it, so we're waiting to hear. But once we get the extension, that will be a new Diesel truck for him, for the fleet. But no guarantee as of today that we can go forward. And you have time to change that anyway, between now and the last Budget Committee meeting.
So we wait on it, what do we do then?
What do you want, what do you want to do, Diane?
We can vote on the Selectmen's number and adjust it if needed.
Right.
Or you can make a motion for the Department Head's number, and we can adjust it. Or you can go in between and.
I knew that was coming.
I'm just, I just wanted to really quickly look to see when the bulk of the repairs were done, to give us an idea of of if it was prior to when we got the new vehicles, if that makes sense.
Yep.
So. Contract maintenance, okay, here we go. Um, okay. Let's see, let's see, we'll look for the big dollar amounts, how about that? When did we get the, was that like September?
There's a little bit more equipment now, too. It does have brakes, it's got a new, couple of new plows, it's got the roller, right? Oh no, we're still, we're gonna lease that?
Right.
Lease to own.
Lease, right.
Right.
Yep.
So let's use, so using October 1st, because we would have done the swap by October 1st. The majority of all the repairs were done prior to October 2021. So you'd be looking at maybe see maybe not even 5,000 or 6,000 tops between October and the end. All the rest of it is the drive shaft, fabricating the drive shaft for the truck we no longer have. Tires. So if we put tires on those vehicles, those should still be good for another year. Is it every two years the tires are replaced, or every year? Berries. We bought a plow for one of the trucks, I would imagine that should still be good, right? That would just be sharpened. This is all prior to October. So, um, just see, what trucks do we trade in?
Couple of the camo trucks, sir.
We know the numbers.
Yeah, I don't know which truck.
No.
Numbers, they are right on.
See if I can see a commonality on the truck numbers. We had a lot of repairs for Truck 20. Truck 20 is gone. Truck 22 seems to be the common theme. Or you can compromise on your repairs. Make it $2,500 difference.
So what we're getting to is.
That's the problem, if you need a repair, you need a repair.
Right.
It doesn't matter what you compromise.
You can make a make a motion for either the Department Head's number.
The problem is, I don't see where he's gonna be able to purchase anything in advance. Most of this is normal service, standard cut and edges that are done pretty much all the time, or whatever.
Well, he had, he had a $3,000.
Oh, no, he didn't.
Stabilizing pads. Unups. Service agreements aren't even in this, right?
Mostly all secondhand stuff, so.
But they had they have service agreements already in place? Well, they do for the, the water in the
Greater.
In the greater and stuff.
Yeah, the only warranties, if the warranties haven't run out before.
I thought these were service agreements, like.
Right. Right. And then it once it lapses, yeah, we don't have any other service contracts.
So keeping in mind too, that the, really, the number that you're looking at, the difference in, is really $7,000, not $12,000, because the $5,000 difference in the Diesel is covered under the warrant article, I mean, the
Capital Reserve.
Yeah, Capital Reserve Fund, so if you took that away, the difference is $113,600 versus $106,600.
All right.
And that would fall into the repairs for highway equipment and.
So if we go with Department's number, that's actually lower, I think.
Right.
And then, and then see if we need to adjust it somewhere.
Right.
So do you want to make a motion? It would be for Highway, Streets, and Bridges, whatever, the Selectmen's number is $106,000.
Make a motion for $106,600.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. 4324, Solid Waste Disposal, this is a contractual number. So the motion would be for solid waste disposal, $257,793. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Other solid waste.
What is that? Allen's, Allen's Town Septic Agreement?
Yeah, we
That's.
Do we have to vote on that as zero?
No, you can just leave it.
I like the number there.
You just, every town is supposed to have an agreement for septic. And we had just been with Allenstown for ever, a long time.
Okay. All right.
So 4329, Other Solid Waste, which is the stump thump for $250. So we'll take a motion on that.
We still have a stump thump?
Yeah, some.
107, isn't it?
Yeah. I was always like, what is?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. 4411, Health and Welfare. Department and Select Board is the same. So I'll take a motion for Health Administration for $2,505. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? 4414, which is Animal Control. Forty-four fourteen, which is Animal Control for one thousand dollars. Do we have a motion?
It should be in the police budget, right?
No.
Are you sure?
Yes.
And that is, what, we use none, zero?
Right, that's, it's really a safety net, if, if the dog has rabies or has bitten someone, yes, there could be costs incurred by the town. Yeah, so.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Four 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 one, Welfare Administration Department and Select Board is the same, so I'll take a motion for four thousand one seventeen for Welfare Administration.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Four 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 two, Welfare Direct Assistance, both department and town is twenty-five thousand, so I'll take a motion for four 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 two for twenty-five thousand. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
How come?
Yeah.
How come it's so little used last year?
I would say probably due to COVID and the money and assistance that was out there. Certainly, our, the next line down, our Community Action Program gives fuel assistance to people in the community, so that helps immensely.
So. Why this is low is because well, he's on a locating town, have learned that Madison is not a free ride. I've seen this figure up for over a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, it's good to see it now near four.
And the twenty-five thousand dollar figure is insurance policy more than anything, because you never know, really, who's gonna come to that.
And they, they get as much assistance as they could potentially need.
Absolutely, and the town has to provide it if they meet the requirements.
Okay.
So Welfare Direct Assistance for twenty-five thousand, do we have a motion?
We did already do.
Did we? I'm like so lost here. Oh, my goodness. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, four 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 four, that's my favorite number, by the way, Community Action Program in the amount of five thousand five hundred. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Forty-five twenty, Parks and Recreation. The both department and Select Board is the same, so I'll take a motion for twenty-four thousand six eighty-three for Parks and Recreation.
Make a motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Let's give you a chance to review it. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstaining?
Aye.
Okay, four yeses, one abstention.
Did he?
At abstention.
Okay.
Okay. Four five five zero, Library. Both departments and Select Board numbers the same, motion would be for a hundred and fifty-nine thousand three hundred and sixty dollars for the library.
So moved.
Do we have a second? I'll second it for discussion purposes, what they're reviewing.
Yes, and in, the Select Board has to submit the library's number.
Yes.
And then it's up to Budget Committee and Town Meeting if they want to.
Yep. It's a line item.
Yeah.
Any further discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Forty-five eighty-three, which is Patriotic Purposes for thirty-five hundred, do we have a motion? Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous, yes. Can you say yes here?
Oh, aye.
Alright, forty-five eighty-nine, which is Other Culture and Recreation, would be for is this encumbered, or are we?
They were, those figures were encumbered from twenty-twenty.
Okay, so we're putting an additional thousand?
Yeah.
Okay. So it'll be for one thousand dollars for Other Culture and Recreation. Forty-five eighty-nine, do we have a motion and a second?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And we don't do debt service, do we do the debt service penalty and fees, or?
Yes.
Okay, so forty-seven ninety for debt penalty fees for one hundred dollars, do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I think that's pretty much everything, yes.
And, right, you don't have to vote on the warrant articles right now unless you, you want to vote on some of them. Same thing with Capital Reserve, it's just suggested, but if you're happy with those numbers, you can vote on them. As you can see, I removed the paving behind the center station from there, and I put it into the government general buildings. It didn't need to be a separate warrant article, and then if, then we can go out and get different bids.
Does everyone want to vote on this, if we want to wait, since we may have plenty of time to do the warrant articles, so?
Yep.
But the basic gist of it is leases for the fire pumper and the ambulance and the cruisers.
And actually, we can remove the library, the HVAC.
Right.
It was in here, it was gonna be a warrant article, but now you're encumbering funds to take care of that, so that will reduce the budget.
Yep.
My goodness.
Yeah.
Even more, wow.
And then we perhaps just have like the DMSite Road is gonna be.
What is that DMSite Road number, Karen? What is that?
Okay, well, the estimate from the engineer to do the completion is about half a million dollars. So we had two hundred and thirty thousand from last year, or I'm just suggesting two hundred thousand, and then there's ten or twenty thousand from the year prior. So you're gonna be somewhere around four hundred and fifty thousand, and as you can see, we use two hundred thousand of that from surplus money. So there's no tax impact.
And then the ice rink walls and playground, there's no tax impact for that either, because we're just extending it out.
Right, and you just voted to carry that over for another year, so it's already in the budget, so there won't be any impact.
And then all the other operating transfers are the ones that have been pretty much every year, right?
The Capital Reserve, yes, and, and the road agent, when I spoke with him today, he is going to get some figures for paving and see what, you know, if that changes any of these figures, so. Right now, it's the same as last year.
Okay, so the only ones looking at increases would be the Highway Department.
Capital Reserve, right, the equipment.
And then you're talking about Historical Society, five thousand again?
Yes, they, they asked if, yes, if the Select Board would submit the request for five thousand.
And then the library computer. And the increase for milfoil.
Correct.
Which includes the six thousand for.
For Lock Lake Colony, and I will finalize those figures once the committee meets.
So. Alright, so they're asking for thirty thousand? And then the six thousand for.
Would be Lock Lake, typically, that's what they ask for, so.
So right now, if we took taking out the twenty-four thousand, we're looking at like ninety-nine thousand increase over last year.
Wow, that's amazing.
Yeah.
And this milfoil money, Karen, so the town will vote on it and approve it or not, but if they do approve it, then at that point, we have to approve how they spend it, correct?
Yes, once they, once it's approved, it's really up to the selectmen, so what we did in the past, and you might want to think about this again, is separating the Lock Lake milfoil money out, then there's no guessing. Then however the town votes on each warrant article, it will be directly to that specific.
Yeah, because it's a special warrant.
And you won't have to worry about.
It could only be used for that.
Right.
Yep. But they can discuss it together and vote on it.
They can, absolutely, yep. Okay.
Alright, um. Did you want to take a vote, or do you want to wait on the potential warrants? Or we want further explanations on them? What is the will of the board?
We have some time, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, warrant articles that do no later than the last budget meeting, but it'd be nice to have it earlier.
Yes.
When?
The last budget meeting. Have to be voted on. Yeah. It'll be before then.
Yes.
Andy's looking like.
I know on the agenda for the next meeting, I put to be determined, so I don't know, maybe it's, maybe you should meet next Tuesday as well. I know that's when the Budget Committee meetings will start. So you'll have whoever is going to be there, Budget Committee and, and the rep, the follow-up rep. You'll have a Monday meeting, then you'd have a Tuesday meeting, and then you'll also have a Thursday meeting.
Gary, say goodbye to, to.
Life, life. Andy, save us a seat, a couple seats.
Yeah, I had mentioned the possibility of maybe meeting again this week, but I think you, I think you've already established what needs to be encumbered, what doesn't, I think the budget's pretty clear, so yeah, I don't think you'd have to meet it all.
Apparently, you don't have a meeting scheduled for next Tuesday.
Right, not, not yet. I think maybe it's important now to probably meet, even if it's just a quick meeting, to talk about warrant articles and I don't know. These are early meetings.
When Diane doesn't show up, you'd have a first meeting.
Listen, I had her ask one when you weren't here.
So I'll post a, a meeting next Tuesday as well? Okay. Alright.
Yeah, because if we have any updates, like explanations on the warrant articles and the power of them.
Okay.
You know, it could have just been, we decided to reduce it last year and it's going back to its level this year, I mean, just something similar like that. Alright, great. Where am I? Okay. Most of the budget is, I mean, under the department head, so I'm gonna open up public input. Do we have anybody that's been watching? Hi, Liz. Anyone want to make any comments?
I'll make a comment.
Yay, how are you?
I'm good, you knew I'd be here.
Where were you last week?
I, I totally blew it. Just like to say thank you to Gary for when he posts in the community page about the roads, it's very much appreciated, and I know the road agent doesn't have time to do that. Really nice for all the residents, so thank you again.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you. Happy New Year.
You too.
That's it, alright, so.
Yeah, really big shout out to the Highway Department, the last several days have been very trying for them, and
Yeah.
Um, they've done a very good job, so.
I also would like to, yeah, shout out for our town administrator, there's a lot of work that goes into this budget behind the scenes, and she really, really, really works hard on it, handles it well, and makes it a lot easier for us, so thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Just pay me later. Keep you around for a little while.
Retirement's coming up, you know.
Alright, so we're gonna close public input, and we do have a non-public under RSA ninety-one dash A, quote three, Roman numeral two, is it?
A.
A. A, which is.
Wages.
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 Okay, so, um, we have a second?
Second.
Ed, for non-public.
Aye.
Gary, Diane, yes, Paul?
Yes.
We're going into non-public, thank you all very much.